Ready and if staff is all ready, I will call to order the Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, December 2nd, December 10th. We could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and we will go to the manager for announcements and a roll call.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to members of the board, staff, and the public for joining us this evening for the December 10th regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors. This meeting has been publicly advertised in accordance with the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act as a hybrid meeting with the option to attend virtually and in person here in the main meeting room. If you are in attendance virtually using the WebEx platform and wish to speak on behalf of an agenda item, please say your name, municipality of residence, and the topic you wish to speak on when the chairwoman calls on you. If you are attending in person with us in the main meeting room and wish to speak on behalf of an agenda item, please address the board at the podium and state your name, municipality of residence, and the topic you wish to speak on. Prior to commencing the meeting, I have a few short procedural items to cover. First, members of the public attending using the WebEx platform are asked to remain muted to prevent any ambient noise from disrupting the meeting. If a member of the public is acknowledged by the chair, they may unmute their microphone for their question or comment. Secondly, board members are asked to indicate their name when motioning or seconding a motion so that the minutes may accurately reflect the action taken. And finally, a rule call of the Board of Supervisors will now be taken to ensure that all members can hear and interact using the WebEx platform. Please indicate that you are here when your name is called. Ms. Strickland?
Here.
Ms. Stevens?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Mr. Patterson?
Here.
Mr. Heller?
Here.
Thank you. Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
All right, thank you. And did we want to potentially move an item?
Yes, ma'am. We have a couple of individuals here for an item. Would love to, if you'll accept the motion, I move to move item six under new business to the first item under new business.
This is Matt, I'll second.
Okay, so place that above consent agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
And then, okay. Okay, any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. All right, thank you. So we are moving item six to the very first item under new business. Okay. Right. We have no proclamations this evening, so we'll move to public input, and this is an opportunity for anyone in the public to make comments on any item not included on tonight's agenda. Seeing none, we will move to approval of the minutes. There are three sets of minutes. Were there any changes or comments on any of these?
I had some changes, but I submitted them already to the manager, and they have been changed in the, so I'm good.
Okay. Anything else? No other changes? If there are none, I'll take a motion to approve all three sets of minutes.
This is Amari, so move.
This is Patty, I'll second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. All right, okay, we will move to special reports and acknowledgements. Under our diversity, equity, and inclusionary activities and acknowledgements, we have Hanukkah observed December 25th through January 2nd, Christmas on December 25th, and Kwanzaa observed December 26th through January 1st. And the next item up was the land development review for Fox Point, and I'll turn it over to the managers. I believe we're going to reschedule this item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, Assistant Township Manager James Progar is not in attendance and will present on this item at a future meeting.
All right, thank you. Okay, we will move to, any, any questions? We'll just reschedule that. Okay, thank you. Under COG and Regional Committee Reports, Human Resources was canceled. We did have the Land Use and Community Infrastructure Committee meeting, and I just wanted to note a couple of things on that. We reviewed the survey results from the comp plan outreach activities. There is a link, but I'm going to ask for a new one, and I'll share that out and have that included on the next agenda with, with the next Lucy agenda on there because it wasn't working. That link wasn't working. There were about 300 responses to the survey. So that's, and that's across all the municipalities for COG. So, but a lot of, so I, I think, you know, the point being there is that we will all need to really engage with that, with that activity as that goes on. And the other thing we discussed that I did want to mention was the draft work plan for the Lucy committee. There was an item on there, which was the North Atherton Corridor Study, and I hadn't been familiar with that item, and so questioned that being on there. We didn't really dive into the detail of that, but it was about options for a North Atherton Corridor Study. And I, my questions were mostly why would it not go through the MPO, like the Benner Corridor Study had just gone, and it hadn't come through the Planning Commission and the board. So, and as we know, any study, the results are usually going to be large projects. So I just, my suggestion was to not include that on there. We'll keep talking about that. We'll see how it comes back in January, but I did want to mention it that was being looked at. So, and if you have any thoughts on that as we go forward, I'm happy to bring them back to Lucy committee next time so you can get back to me whenever, so.
I think I just didn't, wasn't there some reference to our Northland Mobility Study?
Well, that's what I, I mentioned, the mobility study.
Right.
And it was different than that. And also, I mentioned, we, at the MPO, we just adopted the Active Transportation Plan, which would include projects in that area. And so, none of that's been implemented yet. So it just, it seemed to kind of skip a few steps to get put on the work plan. So that was my comment. I wanted to mention it here because we hadn't discussed it because it hadn't been brought to us yet. So I did want to mention that that was my comment there, and if anyone had any other thoughts on it, I'm happy to bring that back to that committee as we move forward. But as of now, I think they are taking that off of the CRPA work plan, and maybe just working on that through their local planning efforts with Paton. So we'll see. I'll bring back whatever new I learned from there, but if there are any questions on that, I'm happy to reach out. Okay, and then it looks like climate action and public safety were also canceled. Any other notes on committees before we move on? Okay, all right. And we will go to staff reports, and we have the manager's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My report is consistent with what was provided at the previous meeting, and any additional updates will be provided at the first meeting in the new year.
Great. Questions? All right. And we'll go to Planning and Zoning Department report.
It is the same report that you're now, last several months have gotten used to seeing. This is for November, and there is nothing overly notable. I'm happy to take questions.
Questions on that?
Just one. The number of complaints still open, like is there a timeline expected to close complaints? Do we have a, not service level agreement, but some sort of kind of process for within X number of days, we close these complaints?
I do know from talking with staff, they do try to work through the complaints as quickly as they can. They also focus on compliance. I know that there's some general consistencies that they try to go with, but written guidelines, I'm not sure that they have a steadfast, they have X number of days. But because that focuses on compliance, like I said, they'll try to, I know they try to move them as is reasonable. A lot of these are individualized, so if there is some circumstance, it's, it is easier and quicker in the long run to close a complaint if you give somebody an extra week or two versus then running them through the entire system where that could delay that for a much longer period of time. So that's not a, we are working, as you know, we're working through a number of processes, but it's called to our attention that maybe you would like to see some quicker closure, but I can give some reasons for why some of those are still open, perhaps at the next report.
I think, yeah, it's fine. As you work through the process, just that'd be great to hear that there's improved processes. I think throughout the year, it's been a theme for me, is that I've enjoyed hearing, is that processes, processes are improving, and then there are outcomes from that that are going through a little bit more quickly and effectively. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Second question is just then on the parking tickets, with the number of open and unpaid. So just maybe same thing there.
Yeah.
What's the process for kind of getting those all three, get that number down to zero, or something much less than there was the prior month, or unless that's a completely new set that appeared?
Perhaps for the next report, we can also include a little bit more on the process itself versus just the, the listing of what's open and closed. Would that be helpful?
It could be totally verbal. That's okay.
Okay.
I think the numbers, I like the data. I like data. So the qualitative that goes with the quantitative, totally fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have. Thank you, ma'am.
All right, that's great. Thank you for that. Any other questions on that? And we'll go to the Police Department report.
Yes, Task Leader Packett is the Ferguson Township Police Department report for November of 2024. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right, questions on that?
If I may, no questions on the report. I just want to say thank you because I saw a police presence out in Pine Grove Mills earlier today. We've had some speeders coming through there, and I know residents are appreciative of seeing the officers there doing the good job that they do.
Thank you.
So just want to extend the offer. Thank you, sir.
I, I think with that, I also will give a shout out over on Blue Course. For those in the T-Berry neighborhood, I often hear about the various speeding and loud vehicles, and I noticed there's been a lot of traffic stops. As a matter of fact, three within one hour not too long ago, so.
Same thing.
I've noticed that, too. And so, yeah, that's much appreciated. It's very visible and, and.
The officers are doing a great job.
Yeah.
I just want to say, also, I hope that everybody is safe this holiday season because this is our last meeting before everything gets a little crazy with the holidays.
Yes.
So just hope everybody's safe and has a good holiday.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Nothing, ma'am. Thank you.
All right. Okay, well, thank you all for that, and we'll move to unfinished business. First up is a public hearing on a resolution of the Township of Ferguson Center County, Pennsylvania repealing Resolution 2023-38 and establishing a new Ferguson Township Schedule of Fees. And we'll go to the manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At the December 3rd regular meeting, the board discussed, or the board received and discussed the draft schedule of fees for 2025, and this evening the board is asked to consider adopting the resolution to approve the 2025 schedule of fees.
All right, thank you. And this is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing for comments on this item. Seeing none, so I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
This is Matt. I moved that the Board of Supervisors adopt the resolution, repealing Resolution 2023-38 and establishing a new Ferguson Township Schedule of Fees for 2025.
This is Patty, I'll second.
All right, thank you. Any discussion on this item? Looking to my left, right, not seeing anything. All right, if there is no discussion on this item, this is a roll call vote.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a roll call vote for Resolution 2024-26. Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Heller?
Yes.
Ms. Strickland?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. We'll move to a public hearing on a resolution of the Township of Ferguson Center County, Pennsylvania repealing Resolution 2023-40 and adopting a revised compensation plan for non-uniformed employees with an effective date of January 1st, 2025. We'll go back to the manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a routine item annually presented to the Board of Supervisors to approve a resolution with a compensation plan for non-uniform employees for the upcoming fiscal year that takes into consideration the increase for, the increase of 3.2% for COLA, which is a revised compensation plan and salary range to reflect the adjustments to wages and salaries for Ferguson Township non-uniform employees, provided with the agenda as a recommended motion for your consideration.
All right, thank you. This is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing for any comments on this item. Not seeing any, I will close the public hearing. Would someone like to make a motion?
This is Patty. I moved that the Board of Supervisors adopt the resolution.
This is Amari, second.
All right, any discussion?
I do have just some questions as to how the 3.2 was arrived at.
That's a great question. We use the CPI index, and then we remove groceries, and we remove fuel, and that calculation is extracted. The township does not have a formal code that actually informs. It's a discretion at the manager, also presented, informed in the budget that was approved and adopted by the Board of Supervisors at the December 3rd meeting. And at this point, this is just formally recognizing that the staff will take the salary ranges and formally update them based on the 3.2 COLA that was approved in the budget.
Okay. No questions. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, I'm not seeing any, and this is a roll call vote.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a roll call vote for Resolution 2024-27. Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Heller?
Yes.
Ms. Strickland?
Yes.
Ms. Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Madam Chair, motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. Okay, up next is a public hearing on a resolution of the Township of Ferguson Center County, Pennsylvania, establishing contributions to the police pension fund by its members. And we'll go back to the manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is an annual routine item as well, as discussed at the September 3rd, 2024 Board of Supervisors regular meeting. And as required, the staff presented to the board what the anticipated numbers would be for the MMO, the Minimum Municipal Obligation for the Police Pension Fund. And in accordance with the Pennsylvania Act 205, the Board of Supervisors is required to take action and adopt by resolution, provided with the agenda packet as a recommended motion for your consideration.
All right, thank you. And I will open the public hearing and take any comments on this item. Not seeing any. I'll close the public hearing. Would someone care to make the motion?
This is Patty. I moved that the Board of Supervisors adopt the resolution.
This is Matt, I'll second.
All right, any discussion on this item? Not seeing any, and this is a roll call vote.
Thank you. This is a roll call vote for Resolution 2024-28. Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Heller?
Yes.
Ms. Strickland?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. Okay, moving on to new business, and as amended at the top of the meeting, we have moved item number six up to the top of new business. So we will go to discussion and authorization for a public hearing for a conditional use application for 498 Meckley Road, and we will go to Kimberly Smith, Director of Planning and Zoning for this item.
Thank you. As you mentioned, this is for 498 Meckley Road, and the request is for a public hearing to be
to be authorized for a conditional use. The request is to establish a small rental equipment company, 600 square feet of outdoor storage. The existing site includes 2,400 square feet of square foot building. There is a gravel parking lot. And the application was received on October 24th. And November 12th, it went to the Planning Commission for a workshop. December 9th, which was yesterday, it went to Planning Commission for Action. That action was to forward with a recommendation for approval to the board. The board, the, the commission has also recommended two parking spaces be required. And a note on the, the use itself, so, under conditional uses in Chapter 27, our zoning ordinance, if a use is not expressly listed, it falls under other. In the previous code, the 1982 code as amended through to the 2019, the 2019 major overhaul removed the category it would have fallen under, which is retail establishments for the sale, service, and rental of goods except aircraft. What remains is something called retail establishments general and the way the, the conditional use section reads, that one of the, the conditions is criteria for what it's most nearly compatible to is what is followed. And so, that brings us back to the retail, the big, the difference is it's not, the word rental isn't in there, but it's very, very under the most like. So, the, the two parking spaces were derived using that, that similar logic, noting the, the parking is not in that same chapter, but the same process follows. So, I'm happy to answer some of the questions that I can. Our planner who's been working on this is also present and the petitioners are also present. And again, the, the request is for, for the board to authorize that this go to a public hearing and I believe that date would be January 7.
All right, thanks very much. We could start with any questions, if anyone has any questions before make a motion or I'm happy to take a motion.
One question, just the, I appreciate that history and any reason why that fell off? Does anybody know, was there?
I tried to ask, from what I understand, it's not very clear in the minutes for why, but that, that is something I'm interested to know and I do think that's, that's a valid question. But I also believe that the use is similar. It wasn't, we tried to get pigeonholed into something that it didn't belong in, I believe it is a similar, it's a, the category used is a fair category. And that's also why it's a conditional use, not a permitted use. So, there's additional level of scrutiny and public hearing.
Well, I very much appreciate your dialogue or your, what you ran, where you ran through that process. That's a clean process, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Good question. All right, any other questions? And I'm happy to take a motion if someone would care to make one.
I am just curious about the, the type of equipment that'll be rented there and what we're opening the door for. Do we have a sense of that?
From what I've, my understanding, they're like the small bobcats kind of equipment. If I'm wrong, I'm getting nods, I think. If I am way off, I am, yes.
Like construction equipment, skid loaders, excavators.
And it was no, construction equipment was the response.
Right, so I'm wondering high lifts, thing like, things like that, that might, as we see on some of the properties in Ferguson?
Not, not large equipment, so not your caterpillar tractors.
All the equipment's actually on the.
And I'd invite you to come up to the podium for, so we can capture comments on CNET and just please provide your name and who you're representing.
Matt Horgus, the, all the equipment's currently on site, it's actually at 494 Meckley. They used to be one property. And it's been a construction location since the dawn of time, so. Any other?
No, I, I think, and I appreciate that because I drive by the property daily and I know it's kind of elevated on, you know, so. But I was just, again, curious to see, as we have properties that rent the high lifts, I know folks have made comments about those in the past. I know Fisselwood is right behind that property. And I'm just wondering about site issues or if those, if that equipment might be located on the property too. And then if we hear things from residents about potentially site obstruction and other things, that's my concern.
Currently, no high lift, no. It's mostly just all digging implements and stuff of that nature.
Okay, yeah. Oh, great, I, I'm glad that, I think this is good, so I appreciate it, thank you.
All right, thanks very much. Anything else or a motion?
Sure, Madam Chair, yeah, I guess I'll just, before I make the motion, I'll just say that, you know, Ferguson Township is, is open for business. So, we need to do what we, all the goodness to, to allow business stop right here in this township. So, with that, I move to authorize staff to advertise for a public hearing on the conditional use application for 494?
498.
498 Meckley Road, sorry, I thought you changed the number. 498 Meckley Road.
And this is Matt, I'll second.
All right, any other discussion or comments? No, seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed, say no. All right, thanks very much. Thank you, thanks for your comments. Okay, we are gonna move back. And we will now go to the consent agenda. There were a number of items on there, did anyone need to remove anything? And if not, I'll take a motion to approve.
This is Patty, motion to approve the consent agenda as listed.
This is Amari, second.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. All right, thank you. Okay, we will move to a public hearing on a resolution of the Township of Ferguson Center County, Pennsylvania levying taxes and assessments for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2025 and ending December 31, 2025. And we'll go back to the manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Provided with the agenda is a copy of the resolution advertised for public hearing establishing taxes and assessments for the fiscal year 2025 beginning January 1, 2025 and ending December 31, 2025. Real estate taxes at 3.172 mils, real estate transfer taxes at 1.37% of the consideration or value of. The transfer earned income tax remains at 1.4% and local service tax remains at $52, $52 per person, $5 of which is remitted to the State Culinary School District and the remaining $47 goes to the township. And there are no proposed changes for the fire hydrant assessment or the streetlight assessment. Provided with the agenda is a recommended motion for your consideration.
All right, thank you. And this is a public hearing, so I'll open that public hearing for any comments on this item. I'm not seeing any, so I will close the public hearing and we'll take a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to adopt the resolution levying taxes and assessments for the fiscal year 2025.
I'll do it a second.
This is Patty, I'll second.
Okay, any discussion on this item?
I, no, I think, again, my, my only comments are that I hope in the new year, we'll take some time and maybe find, do a little bit of a retrospective on the budget, offer feedback, comments, et cetera, through the experiences that, you know, what we learned over this last year, just like we did at COG and everything else. But just want to hopefully carve out that time in future agenda. Thank you.
Any other discussion, comments?
Well, because you talked, I'm gonna do it.
Don't follow, don't do that.
No, I, I'm, I'm in full agreeance with you and I've got some ideas. There's some, there's some things that I've, discussions with constituents and also some just wild ideas that I, I'm gonna start getting some, putting more thought into and thought around in '25 and we'll.
GM up.
See where they, see where they go. But very excited about this team working together to do it. Over.
All right, any other discussion? And if not, this is a roll call vote.
Thank you, Madam Chair, this is a roll call vote for Resolution 2024-29. Mr. Heller?
No.
Ms. Strickland?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes four to one, majority consensus.
Okay, we'll move to discussion on proposed 2025 Board of Supervisors regular and special meetings for review of capital improvement plan and annual operating budget.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Provided with the agenda is a copy of the proposed dates for the 2025 Board of Supervisors regular meeting as well as the special meetings to review the special, the capital improvement plan as well as the operating budget in 2025 for 2026, as well as the CIP road tour and the ABC appreciation event. I will note that there has been a change since my appointment as manager. Previously, we kind of identified dates within one to four, two to four months outside of our scheduled meetings for these, review of operating budget as well as the CIP. And now, we bring to the board proposed dates that we believe will keep us in sync with the schedule for a special meeting to hold a public hearing to do a review of the budget and then bring back the, the draft budget for the board to observe the changes as discussed at a special meeting for authorization of a public hearing and then approval of the budget. Happy to discuss these dates and these changes that are made this evening or if approval is as what's being presented to the board. You will see these dates back in front of you at the organizational meeting for final approval and advertisement of our upcoming meetings in 2025.
All right, thank you, and thanks for bringing this forward. This is an opportunity for us to say there's a major conflict we're aware of, anything like that, or, you know, suggestions on the timing and so forth. We just started this a couple of years ago, trying to get these dates booked ahead of time so that we can have everybody present for all these important meetings and it's difficult to coordinate schedules and, and then to be able to have CNET present. So, any comments on these dates? Yep, go ahead.
Yeah, I think that the budget next year is gonna be more tricky than the budget this year and that we need to maybe acknowledge that and whether it's utilizing the noon special meetings in addition to these and just recognizing that we're gonna use those as well. I think we're gonna need more than just two meetings for 2025 with the steeper cliff upon us.
So, that October special meeting would be the 8th and then the following would be November 12th, that special meeting? Or did you want to propose a different date to add?
I'm okay with those, just wanted that recognition here, just as, as we were kind of talk through it, it's, now that we're recognizing all this in advance and we've got two on there, let's go ahead and put the other two on there and then everybody, you know, has 10 months to, to plan their calendars and get it out there. But those, I think we're gonna need more than two.
Did you want to, so you wanted to suggest a third budget meeting?
Or we use those existing noon, unless we don't use it for something else. I mean, we didn't have a use for them this year. If we think there's gonna be a lot of other agenda items, maybe we do need another one outside of these two, but the recognition that the noon special meetings will go for budget, I think.
So, that October?
Yeah, the October 12.
Okay, so that would be the 8th.
8th and.
Okay, so you want to suggest to add?
8th and 12th?
The 8th, November 12th and October 8th as additional budget work, additional budget special meetings as needed.
I wouldn't put as needed, I'd put them on there hard and fast. That's what, yeah.
The November Wednesday 1 and the October Wednesday 1.
Okay, okay, yeah.
Okay, thoughts on that?
Yeah, October 8th, November 12th.
I, I like the idea of four meetings, you know, and also then just scheduling out the timeline and making sure that we carve out, you know, realistic timelines on any of the meetings that we have, well, the agenda's on each of those days will be important. Just like we did with COG, you know, you get that, the, the budget hearings and everything like that, you know you're set, who's gonna be there, just like we do here. But again, building an extra time and then maybe having a couple of recaps like that last date as the final review will be important. So, I think we can talk through the process on all that, plan for it, for.
Okay, any other comments on adding two more dates to that?
I, I would be in favor of adding two more dates onto that. I know Mr. Patterson has mentioned about noon meetings. I don't know if that is a discussion for at this time, but I would actually like to maybe see the township move away from noon meetings in the new year, especially on budget that has been a area of concern to our residents who have wanted to attend budget meetings in years past.
So, maybe we take those special meetings and make them evening meetings?
That, that would be what I would suggest.
And I would cut it down to one then, if we're gonna make it.
I would too, just because that's an, an additional evening for staff to.
Exactly.
To be here. That is the, a benefit of new meetings is that staff is here already, so. Okay, thought, any consensus on this? And again, we don't have to make a final decision if we have some thoughts and the manager can go back and, and kind of look at this.
I, I would say if we are thinking about reducing it to three, that maybe October 16th is the last of the meetings so that we, we come out of it earlier and then we can have a, maybe a different discussion too if there are any potential changes that that discussion wants to lead into. But giving us some more time between those budget discussions and the end of the year would probably be beneficial.
I will have to look at the calendar just to get a sense to see, so per the charter, we start our, like, the operate, the operating budget has to be, and I'm, I'm citing it from memory and I will confirm at a future meeting, three months between the adoption of the capital improvement plan to the adoption of the annual operating budget. And so, there are some dates here that we have to fall within. So, to, to suggest a realistic timetable here, I would want to just closely look and see what we're required to do. But I think if we're, if the goal, and I, and I'm not sure that I captured the dialogue correctly, I heard have a hard stop in terms of additional meetings at October 16. But if I heard a comment prior to that, it was perhaps additional meetings on the 8th and the 12th of November? Or was that October?
October 8th, November 12th.
Thank you for that clarification, October 8th. And so, those additional meetings may or may not be conducive to what you're trying to do, right? So, like, by the time we get into the November, we have at that first meeting authorized for a public hearing. And so, just kind of thinking a little bit about the timeline, if you want to hold two meetings to talk through budget increase, or tax increases and look at the proposed expenditures, you might want that, those meetings for increased dialogue to happen in October. Once we get into, if you recall the process, we, we hold those special meetings, we look at those revenues, we look at those expenditures, and then you have your consensus for changes to the proposed budget. And then that needs to go back to staff for a period of time to reconcile what's been presented and present to you what transitions from a proposed budget to a draft budget. And then it's for review, approval, and then authorization for a public hearing. And there's only so many meetings remaining. So, so everything that you're sharing, I think, is doable. I just, before I can say that, that makes perfect sense, I'd want to look at the timeline.
So, I think overall, what I'm hearing is a consensus, and tell me if I'm wrong, on adding at least one additional budget meeting, if not two, if possible. And if possible, to maybe have one of those in the evening. I don't know if that was a consensus. I'm fine having them both at those noon times, but I guess there's openness to an evening?
I'd be, I'd be in favor of an evening.
Okay, so, you know, as, as able, you know, we're, I'm not seeing any, any no's to looking at evening meetings for those. So, this just gives the manager some, some ideas, you know, she has our thoughts now and then can come back at the organizational meeting with some proposed dates. If that, if that sounds okay? Okay, other thoughts on all of this?
I do have some thoughts on the capital improvement work. So, I'm fine with those dates, but I'm also, just want to raise this, the Finance Committee did mention, or I should say, the new Executive Director of COG mentioned that they may want to revisit how they do the CIP and their budgeting and the timing of those things, maybe put the operating budget before the CIP instead of the CIP and then the operating budget. So, with that being said, I'm just curious, how do these dates maybe align to that or would we have to adjust potentially? Or do we just say we might have to adjust based on what we hear from COG? How would we deal with that?
So, this evening, following the conversation, I will confirm with the Executive Director over at COG what the township is intending to do and that's how I've managed this process in the last two years. In the past, we kind of just fell into what COG presented to us and sometimes it worked and sometimes it did not. So, getting ahead and kind of positioning Ferguson Township in the driver's seat, I say to COG, here is our schedule. Ferguson Township in the driver's seat, I say to COG, here is our schedule. Let me know if you can work within this. And we were providing it so early in advance.
Yes.
That they were able to kind of swoop in and, and kind of work within our schedule, which is the benefit of, of doing what we're doing in December. Um, so, so I'll send an email to Ben, uh, Estelle, executive director of, of CR COG, and, uh, he'll confirm that they'll be able to put a schedule together or he'll say they can't. And then I will bring that forward to you for discussion in January. But up to date, we've been so early in the game.
Yes.
That it's worked really well.
That sounds great to me, especially these dates here because I'll be out of the country. Perfect. I'm kidding as I did last year. I got you again.
Like, well, you're going to, uh, this is the, this is the opportunity to change the dates. And that I will just note, we just began, you know, kind of moving our schedule a little bit forward and presenting it to COG in fall of 2022. So just so that we could try to get ahead of it. So it's, it is a relatively new, uh, sequence of events that we've tried. And it's, it's been successful. So that we, we were able to get COG's numbers in before our budget is completed. Uh, so it is, it has been working much better. All right. Any, any other comments on this? This was just a discussion item. I don't see any other comments on this. And again, we'll, this will come back to us at the organizational meeting. Nothing else? Okay. If there is nothing else, we are going to move on to board discussion item request, agenda order of business for 2025 with supervisor Patterson.
Oh, yes. Um, okay. So this was, um, actually, I'm not sure there's much to discuss because we just did what I was discussing, uh, which was there's, um, some individuals in the room that, you know, their item was at the very end, very simply moved to move that item up. And so they were able to go home and to the extent they hired a, the, another, uh, a third party entity to help them in this process, they were able to kind of, that person was in and out. They can stop the clock and avoid a few extra dollars of, of, uh, in their journey to business or whatever other type of things happening here, uh, before the board. So I don't think there is, there's no motion here. It's, you know, if we're good, if we, we continue in this path, I think we're, we're right where we should be. So, thank you.
Well, thanks for bringing it up. And that's just a, you know, uh, a benefit of a small board. You're able to make those kinds of changes as needed. And so we've had other occasions where there's been, uh, you know, before we move proclamations up to the top of the agenda, we'd have a proclamation later and we'd see, you know, a bunch of kids in here for something, you know, we want to move that up front. So as we see the need, you know, and the board is, uh, is, uh, willing, you know, those, those little changes can be made and it is more convenient for everybody. So, yeah, thanks for bringing it up.
I just have to once again thank the staff and the manager on the smooth process such that when we get to this point, that it's seamless, you know, that we're done. It's, it's a, the open and shut for us with all and the planning commission, all the other, uh, boards and commissions that do the work, that bring a nice clean packet to us. So just thank you to all.
And they just discussed it last night. So that was a quick turnaround. So much appreciation to the staff. I think I saw some public comment. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah. I, I also just, I want to put this out there. Sometimes the special reports and acknowledgements can be long, um, depending on the, the topic, et cetera, and have maybe little to do with the actual agenda items that we would see that evening. So I'm curious, because those aren't in, because there might be public waiting, is that something that we can also, depending on the crowd or the discussion topics, move to the end as we, as we need to, just in the, in the moment?
Uh, move it in the moment?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would think so. I mean, sometimes those would be what, um, you know, volunteer presenting on a board or authority. So you wouldn't necessarily want to put them at the end. Um, but if it was something, or, you know, if a staff person's able to leave after their report, you would want them to be able to leave. So, but I, I wouldn't see why.
For, for example, I mean, I think tonight's was a good example. The land development review for Fox Point, I had a lot of questions and some things I wanted to dive in to on that. I, that would have taken probably more than 15, 20 minutes to work through and questions and, you know, notes, et cetera. So in something like that, I would have proposed maybe we move that to the end of the meeting, especially. And does that seem reasonable to folks? I guess is my question, if we see something like that.
Yeah, I would think so.
Okay. Then I have no comments with the order as long as we're just open to, to things like that and acknowledging it.
Yeah. I mean, you want things to be, uh, relatively predictable. Once the agenda's published and CNET viewers are going to tune in, you know, it's, so you want the public to be able to know when to tune in to an item once it's been published in the agenda. Um, but if there's reason to move, like for instance, this evening, you know, there was reason to move that item up and, and the, um, interested parties were present. So there was a reason to move that. Um, but yeah, but keeping all of those things in mind, yeah, there's, you know, there's built in flexibility on, on those things. So yeah, good point.
Great. Thank you.
Anything else? And we'll go to public comment. Yep. And just come on up to the podium and, uh, just give us your name and township of residence.
Bill Keough, Ferguson Township. I appreciate what you did tonight and I appreciate the discussion that you have as far as, as our citizens and our business community in terms of business that they have before you. Uh, I remember back when I was a supervisor, one of the things that we frequently did, at least one of us, and there were only three of us on the board at that time, uh, on a regular basis. But typically our audiences weren't terribly full, i.e. an example tonight. And typically one of us would approach anybody in the room prior to the meeting and say, yeah, you here for anything special tonight? Uh, also staff needs to feel comfortable saying to the chair that we have an applicant in the room tonight, uh, and could we move this particular item up? Uh, I, I think it has to be a work in progress with all of you. It's not just a matter of it automatically happening because none of you, or maybe only one, would recognize the fact that there's somebody here for a particular item. Uh, and so it, it, it'll take a little effort, I think on your part, but, uh, in the, the public speaking world, that's called reading your audience. And, uh, I think it's important that we, we try and make adjustments, especially when we have two and a half hour meetings. So thank you.
Okay. Other discussion on this item?
Yeah. And thank you, uh, Mr. Gill, for acknowledging the individuals today. Um, I did scan the room and they weren't there. And then a few came up and there were two people here. So appreciate that.
All right. Anything else on this? Not seeing anything?
Yeah. I, I had actually, and just, just a point of inquiry, like the, the chair, the chair still has the authority to set the agenda order of business that, to then be approved by the board, right? Or?
Yeah. I think what we're talking about here was, yes, the chair does the, the good chair work. And so with, upon reading the room, then hey, we, we got a person that's got, you know, kind of a.
Exactly.
We read the room, talked to the chair. Chair's like, if you want to make the motion. So I'm, that's, we, we just did that today. So I think it's, we're good.
Exactly. Um, and then, you know, we adopt the order of business, the agenda order at the start of the year. So this is just an opportunity to kind of, uh, input ideas for that organizational meeting. So I always bring up that, um, proclamations, uh, example because it was proclamations were toward the bottom and we'd have people sitting here. And so we moved that up and we talked about that before the organizational agenda. So once we got there, you know, it had already been discussed. So this is just kind of an opportunity to get ideas out there. Like, you know, hey, I think this would improve, you know, efficiencies, but, but really, you know, discussing that flexibility is built in to make these, you know, last minute calls, I think is important too.
Yeah. I, I had just sort of drafted up what I, you know, would be interested in seeing as an, uh, agenda order of business for, for the new year. And, you know, I'm definitely glad to discuss those in depth or, you know, pass those along or, you know, take any feedback.
Yeah. Was there something you wanted to bring forward for discussion? This is the, this is the item.
Whatever anyone was interested in, I, um, with the, um, I was kind of, I think I saw some opportunities to maybe like either condense or group, uh, particular items, uh, such as putting like the pledge of allegiance and even a meeting procedures and roll call into like the call of order, uh, keep it announcements and proclamations to follow by public comment, approval of minutes. Um, I did, was sort of interested, the reports that we give us ourselves as board members for COG committees, maybe moving that towards the end. That was something that had been at the end at one point. Uh, and there are sometimes things that do come forward from those committees that I think we, we should maybe discuss or consider discussing. And, uh, some, sometimes even I'm a little bit hesitant to do that because I'm kind of interested in moving the meeting along for those other items, especially the ones that you have public here that want to speak on or a representative. Um, so yeah, just then following approval minutes, go into special reports and presentations to include the ABC, uh, reports that we have appointed volunteers, uh, presenting because again, uh, it was mentioned earlier, don't necessarily want to keep a volunteer here all, all night. Um, and there is flexibility, like if a volunteer was maybe running a little bit behind, we could maybe consider some type of, um, just postponement on that item, you recall.
That has been done. We have pushed things back if somebody wasn't able to be here at their assigned time. Okay. So pushing COG committee reports back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, staff reports, unfinished business, new business, and then maybe in our, I guess right now we have the communications to the board, but maybe creating a, a section on official reports and correspondence to include our COG committee assignment reports, followed by any communications by, to the board within that section. Um, and then going into calendar items. Um, it didn't mention about the DEIB initiatives. I don't know if we maybe want to maybe move that into, kind of looking for some suggestions here, maybe moving that into our announcements and proclamations section or even into calendar items. Uh, so.
Yeah.
And then, then Patty's favorite one, a German always at the end. I don't think we want to move that one up.
Well, good suggestions. I think, um, you know, the main one I heard is moving COG committee reports to the end. So that may be something we want to discuss.
I, I was with that idea too earlier, but then I thought, how many times do I hear something that comes up in Lucy or HR? And then we've got some topic later on where it's like, wait a minute, I heard this thing that Jeremy said or Patty. And I'm like, how does that impact that? That's my only concern with moving that. And the same argument could be made for the special reports and acknowledgements as I just did, unfortunately. So I, I, I feel, you know, uh, kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place on this one. But I know I find benefit in going through the COG committee reports early, um, especially because I think, well, how long do they usually take? 15 minutes, 10 minutes, somewhere in there? As opposed to like the special reports and acknowledgements that can go on and on if we have a longer report or a longer, you know, whatever it might be. Um, that was my only concern with that. But of course I'm happy to do with majority if we have other ways of looking at that. But that was my only concern.
All right. Now.
And, you know, for me, the, uh, DEIB things, I, I kind of like where they are now. I think it just feels inclusive right up front. Like we're acknowledging, this is our community. We're acknowledging these things. Um, anyway, I'd be happy with leaving them there.
And that was the idea of having them there was there, uh, in a distinct area of their own and not kind of lumped in. So it's acknowledging those calendar items that have been requested and incorporated. So, well, all good discussion. Um.
I'm good with that.
You know, and again, this will be presented in the organizational meeting and, um, can be further discussed. So very good. Well, thanks everyone for that, uh, for that input and discussion.
Because I think that's so important. Now that we have kind of a better, I think, a better understanding of, okay, we're going to see maybe more things moving around, you know, for a bunch of different reasons and discussions. So I just want to say thank you for bringing this up, Mr. Patterson and putting this on the agenda.
Very good. All right. Okay. If there is nothing else, we are going to move on to review and discussion of the 2025 draft authorities, boards and commission work plans. And we'll go to the manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Provided with the agenda is a narrative that highlights proposed work plans as the board's charge here is really to review the proposed work plans as presented by staff liaisons to the authorities, boards and commissions. Um, you know, make any changes that you would like to see. So the ABCs are, um, doing the work that the board would like them to do. And, uh, the work plans then are presented to the ABCs in January at their first organizational meeting. So it's clear to all the members of each ABC what, what the expectation is from the board. Uh, also presented to the board is a proposed, uh, change to the schedule. So currently most of these, uh, ABCs presented here meet on a monthly basis. And understanding that it takes quite a undertaking to prepare agendas and do the minutes and ensure that they're uploaded and understanding that we've had an increased number of authorities, boards and commissions since 2017. We introduced the tree commission. We introduced the Parks and Recreation Committee in 2019. Uh, and then we introduced the Pine Grove Mills Marea Plan in, I believe it was 2020 or 2021. Uh, but we have not seen an increase in staff necessarily, right? So there have been administrative assistants that have taken on this additional workload as well as other staff liaisons like our tree arborist. And, and no one is necessarily complaining. I have not received complaints, but understanding that the workload sometimes requires late evenings and understanding that we're trying to mitigate and manage some of that. And then also acknowledging that sometimes the workload isn't there for the actual ABC. Um, and so if we're creating meetings and just holding them with some agendas, we're almost inviting that ABC to kind of explore additional ideas of their own and not necessarily what's been tasked by the board of supervisors. And so really asking for the board to have a deliberate conversation about what you would like to see with these ABCs, um, and then give some thought to moving from maybe a monthly schedule to a quarterly schedule or somewhere in between. And then we will of course announce that schedule early on at the year. Um, happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Okay. We could start with questions and then, um, yeah, I thought we could just look at each work plan as presented and offer our input on those. And then after we've gone through each, we'll be able to better kind of reconsider the, um, the frequency schedule. So questions first, let's start with that.
Maybe my comments or questions are better for the latter part of this, but I'll just maybe preview them so we can see if they are. What I'm wondering is how we go ahead and show progress and maybe see that we're making progress in these areas. Because I remember at the beginning of last year, we also, we did the same thing where we reviewed the, the work plans, we approved them. And then I don't recall really seeing the progress made towards them. Things turning from, you know, in progress to green, complete, things like that. So I'm wondering, how do we, could we maybe take something like this and have it as part of our, um, of our regular meeting is having a report also that focuses on the ABCs so that we can see every month, this is complete, this is turned to green. And we can actually see how the progress is being made towards the goals. That's really my focus for this. Less concerned about the specific items that have been called out by staff, um, because I rely on the subject matter experts to, you know, bring these things forward and plan accordingly. But I'd like to see some way of, of reporting on these throughout the year.
And that was my comment too. And I think I have made it before is if we can get the minutes that are created anyways, included in the agendas even quarterly, uh, so that we all have easy access to them and can see them. We had, I'd talked before about even, you know, making the recordings on Zoom available for those that are done by Zoom. But I know that's a whole storage issue. So that isn't even necessarily, uh, better than having the minutes included in the agenda. So that would be my suggestion. I would really like to see minutes included. And I think that's an easy lift for, uh, these, um, these committees, especially the, they're already being created. And so it'd just be an attachment under, under, um, committees, under staff reports, you know, in those, in those departments or, uh, something to that effect. So, yeah, I think, you know, and other than that, it's our, you know, I guess our observations. So with, you know, say tree commission and education, we know the Arbor Day activities that go on. And so we're, you know, we're all aware of, of. you know, we're all aware of, of activities and, and, uh, and accomplishments in some of these areas. But, um, I think seeing the minutes would be a good step.
I like that idea.
And the minutes are available on the website.
And so if I'm hearing you correctly, you want staff to take an, an additional step to go ahead and put them inside your agenda. Okay. So when you go to the agenda on the webpage, you click the Board of Supervisors Agenda. Okay.
I understand. I think, and that would just, I think prompt, uh, board members to probably review them and then ask questions regarding the activities that occurred at the meetings. So.
Wasn't there a ti- I'm almost thinking or heard there was a time when, uh, the members of the ABCs would report to the board in a meeting. I know when I was on the Planning Commission as Chair, my responsibility was annually to address the Board of Supervisors on the state of the planning report, but, um.
And we do that still.
Yeah, we still, yeah, it's still done, but.
Yeah, but there are not regular presentations of, you know, say quarterly or so forth. That's done by the staff member.
You basically just recap the whole year, but.
Mm-hmm. But yeah, those are all done by staff as, uh, incorporated into their departmental reports.
Bottom line for me, folks dedicate their time, their volunteers for this, and I really want to give credit where credit's due because a lot of hard work goes in behind the scenes. And when I see things turning from in progress to complete, well, well done, right? The process is working. People are coming to the table and we're, we're working through things as a community as we should. So I think that, for me, it's an important step to see what's moving through here for the recognition of the volunteers and their time.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Do we want to go ahead and take a look at the, uh, work plans?
Not yet.
Yeah, okay, go ahead.
I have some more kind of general. So, uh, Madam Manager, uh, you have the Parks, Tree, Planning Commission and, um, Pine Grove Mills Tax Commission. I think we're going to need some tax commission involvement this year.
The Tax Review Board.
Tax Review Board, sorry, Tax Review Board. Um, to really kind of, yeah, figure out this 2025 problem in, uh, uh, October of next year. So whether that's, I don't, I don't know all the things necessary to do that, but I'd like to see that in the work plan specifically. That's, that's kind of a, you know, there's things that are here, but what's not here, I think tax, very important this year, next upcoming year.
Right. And so the Tax Review Board would meet as needed. So once they, once the board discusses or once staff brings to the board what the, what a plan would be, if a board approves that plan, the Tax Review Board, by law, the way that it's described with their charges is they take that recommendation or what's on the table for consideration by the board and they assess review and then they bring back kind of their, their, their review and recommendation. So there's not generally a regular schedule. If we want to create a regular schedule, that would be an additional meeting where we'd be bringing them together on a monthly basis. But they, their charge is to assess whatever proposed tax is being presented. So we would want to have a presented proposed tax rate for them to review and discuss.
Uh, there's more to that group. Review and monitor tax, right? And then, and prepare tax policy, long-term tax plan. So that's a little bit more than just review what the board gives them, right?
Right. Yeah. We would need to create something for them to review.
And additionally, just having the organizational meeting.
Right. We could do that.
So getting that in the work plan. So creating, creating the work plan, having the organizational meeting, I think is a first step to what you're saying too. So yeah, so just having that on there so that we're able to convene them as necessary, um, to, to all the things you just said. So I think that could be the first, the first item on there.
What I, and so with follow-on from that, our biggest need right now, the, the thing that's going to keep me up at night is the 2025 budget. So we've got to have all hands on deck for that 2025 budget. And that includes each and every one of these commissions, I think, boards, whatever, giving their input. What are the things that they can bring to the table to, to give staff, give staff ideas to getting more efficient in several areas? I think parks is one of them where we're cutting a ton of grass. And so can we do something a little bit different there, right? We, we, there's, there's something that can be done. And I think high on the list for every commission of just this writ large is budgetary related. Over. That's my feeling of just overall.
So for clarification, is that something the board wants is an organizational meeting with the Tax Review Board?
I would support that because that gives us the flexibility then to convene them as necessary or as desired.
And realizing in what you had said previously that when you'd reached out to people, some people didn't respond or whatever. So understanding that it's a, it's a process that we're starting. It may not be complete this year, but to at least acknowledge that that's what.
I think it makes sense. I'm just looking for board consensus. The feedback is, is clear. All right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Other thoughts before we go into looking at plans? Um, and so I'll include now we have a Tax Review Board work plan with the item of organizational meeting. And then maybe we, you know, convene that quarterly. You know, we could maybe, you know, establish that just so we have some, some information to share at that organizational meeting. We could say, because likely, um, there will be items to discuss, you know, would have review previous year's budget with, uh, with revenue models and so forth. So I would, I would propose that.
And that would be quarter, you want it quarter- quarterly?
I'm throwing it out there as a, as just.
As needed even, right? And so maybe the organizational meeting would determine more or less if you're, if the board would like to see that.
Think, yeah, I'm thinking maybe as needed part because if we were to come forward with our budget and a tax increase, would we maybe want to see that committee maybe convene a little bit more in those closing months of the budget year?
Right. And that's why I would suggest to say quarterly and then to cancel as, as appropriate.
I agree. Quarter, sounds good.
So the worst, because these folks will be new coming on board. We can engage them, you know, get them, you know, acquainted with their email. You know, I don't know what level they're going to be at. And so, um, you know, with agenda setting and, and, uh, you know, reviewing what materials do they need? Um, that could be two meetings. And so I think, you know, then maybe you cancel that third one and you bring them back for the fourth. I don't know. But, but it, just establishing the dates gives those individuals some, uh, expectation in how to, how to manage their own personal schedule. Okay. So that was that one. And the, let's go ahead and did you have a comment on this?
Just on the Tax Review Board, but the bigger picture.
Oh, did you want to make it now before we go on?
Can.
Okay. Looked like you were ready to make that comment. So I didn't want to hold you up. So if you could just provide your name and township of residence.
Bill Keough, Ferguson Township. Management of our ABCs is a real challenge, especially for staff. And yet the role that the ABCs play is our communication with our citizens so that they don't have to march up here in front of you every meeting to say what they want or what they think. Uh, they can do it through our ABCs and, and our ABCs provide that discussion place. So I'm not a great fan of business as usual with regard to the management of our ABCs. I'm not a great fan of having staff be the primary glue to hold the ABC together. I feel a staff member needs to be assigned to an ABC. But if the staff member is the one who has to take the minutes, make the agenda, and do all of the electronics necessary for a meeting to exist in, in our sunshine world and all that stuff, that's a huge amount of stuff. And, and I feel that there is a much better way of managing our ABC meetings. Some ABC meetings have real legal implications, i.e. our zoning hearing board and in fact, our planning commission. Uh, because frequently if it goes to court for something, the minutes from the planning commission as part of the review process become part of the record. I think we've got to look at treating the management of our ABCs to the quality and the, the demand that is going to be necessary. Uh, certainly our park committee, uh, and I attended that on a regular basis. Uh, it does not have the same legal implications with regard to advisory to you that the planning commission has to you. The zoning hearing board is a separate animal in and of itself. Uh, they don't have to advise you. They can tell you, but the rest of us can't. I think that we need to continue with some discussion about the overall management of our ABCs and improve the efficiency of that process rather than just going business as usual and having staff have to take on all of that additional burden to run the ABCs as we're, and that seems to be the protocol now. And I don't think that's the most efficient protocol. And I don't think that that's necessarily a protocol that, that we can sustain moving forward. So that's the end of my comment in general, but I really feel that, that we've got it, we've got to do a different job of managing our ABCs. Part of that is going to come upon you in the next month and a half as you appoint new members to our ABCs. Because the need to look at their skill levels and what they have to offer become an important part of their ability to function and our staff's ability to, to let loose of some of these onerous obligations that they've inherited. So think about it.
All right. So I did want us to be able to have a look and offer a comment on each of these plans. Um, we could start, tree commission was up first if there was anything on tree. And then at the end, we can kind of come back to general comments and scheduling.
I guess my general comments, and it's related to tree commission as well as the, the parks one. So just why, they, they look different than the other ones. And I wasn't sure if there was a, a reason for that or why they were different.
I assume it's because different, the different staff liaison would have put them together. Let me try to find one.
Yeah, I'm just looking at like page 157 and 158.
So they're ma- they're, uh, managed by different staff liaisons from different departments.
Okay. But the other ones look similar. Look the same. Pine Grove Mills Small Area Plan Advisory Committee, uh, Planning Commission.
Those would both be under the Planning Department.
Okay. So it really is just department, departmental differences that we're, can, would we consider maybe, can they be similar? Can they be the same going forward? I'm not saying this year, I'm just looking. Because again, it's helpful to me when I see something that might go from a, if we talk about reports and seeing progress, et cetera. If I see something that moves from initial planning to complete, again, that's a, that's a good thing.
Was there a proposal?
Um, yes, that maybe the, the Township Tree Commission as well as the Parks and Recreation Work Plan, both of those mimic the Planning Commission work plan and Pine Grove Mills Small Area Plan Advisory Committee, et cetera.
Mm-hmm. Okay. You have no issue with that? I think as they recreate plans, I probably wouldn't, I, I wouldn't need that for this year, but I think as they go to create the following years to just, you know, use that as a template.
Mm-hmm.
And that's helpful for, uh, new incoming staff too, to, to have a template for that. Okay. Any comments on the tree commission work plan? I didn't have any.
I was just curious about, so there are a couple of things that are marked all four quarters and then several things that are not marked in fourth, quarter one at all. I would assume that Q1 is probably, there's a lot of planning in Q1 to prepare for Q2, Q3, when a lot of the work is happening. Um, so the, yeah, so I'll pause there for thoughts on that statement.
I, I, I think that, um, you don't have an X, for example, if you're looking at the Parks and Recreation Work Plan, because there's not, there's proposed quarterly meetings. Is that what your question is?
For tree commission. And some of that's probably seasonal.
Right. And so that's, yeah, I was looking at the Parks and Recreation, but it, the same concept as I look here, right? So evaluate insect and disease threats. It's, it's winter time in first quarter. So we're not out looking at diseased trees, but we see more of the diseased trees and that evaluation take place more as we move into spring and summer. So much to what you said, Madam Chair, it's very much, um, presented based on seasonal work as well as the operations of what's being presented as that line item in terms of a work plan item number.
Sure. So number one, I was not looking at when I was saying, why isn't there a Q1? It was more on like the planting and removal recommendations. So if there's a gap somewhere, are they looking at that now to then have a recommendation? Same thing for planting, you know, those types of things. That's, that's, because the work is happening in Q, March, April, May, Q2, right? Or June, April, May, June, yeah. So maybe there's some shifting in, in the, or it, and maybe that's in our first question that, you know, when it, when we come back in January, we can have a little bit more there. But I think.
Identifying. So help me understand, are you looking to have an additional line item that just acknowledges planning in general for the year? Because what we end up seeing more in the wintertime is like a preparation of like education and outreach and, and kind of putting together that work plan, um, for the tree commission. And so this is just an ABC. Like this isn't necessarily like the tree arborist work plan for his individual day-to-day, Monday through Friday, eight to five work. This is a commission. So this is like the tree commission, for example, the chart, like our code ordinance, our code ordinances is very specific to say like what each ABC is tasked with doing in terms of presenting recommendations. And so for example, the tree commission is asked to review land development plans as it's specific to tree-related items. And so an ongoing evaluative goal is that they're looking at land development plans as needed throughout the year. So that would be something that's ongoing.
And, yeah, I'm seeing.
Does that make sense?
Sorry.
That's okay. So the tree commission itself isn't necessarily planning and prepping, but the arborist is planning and prepping. So, and that was in part why presenting quarterly meetings, right? Um, it's the staff that does the work. So the ABC volunteers can review and provide their expertise and their experiences on recommendations. ABCs, with the exception of much like Mr. Keough said, zoning hearing board and MPC, or Planning Commission, it's very clear and legislated as to what their task and role is. But for the other, or ABCs, Pine Grove Mills Maria Plan, Tree Commission, Parks and Recreation Committee, their charge is very much an advisory role to the Board of Supervisors. And so if you look at the code of ordinances, um, uh, government administration, it's very clear. It outlines what each parks and, you know, what, what each ABC role is. And so it's really another form of, of public outreach. So for example, when we have ABC volunteers serving on the Parks and Recreation Committee and we're looking for feedback to help inform the board with recommendations, and we know that our Parks and Recreation Committee is meeting, for example, quarterly, and they might be reviewing the playground, uh, playgrounds within all of our 12 parks, um, we know that it's been vetted and a recommendation's coming from our volunteers because of the organization and meetings where we're presenting to them, for example, maybe colors as to. for example, maybe colors as to, you know, what color options we might want to have at, say, Brook Greenbrier Park. And I think sometimes that's often overlooked. Some folks will say, we need more public engagement. But the Parks and Recreation Committee convening quarterly is public outreach because the ABC volunteer members are providing in terms of an advisory role to the board as to what we should do.
Okay, so let's take number three on the tree commission document specifically, which is continue to identify tree planting locations that have not been utilized in order to continue the expansion or reinforce. Wouldn't one think that that, cancel that. I would think that that continue to look would happen in Q1, because then that informs. Or are we looking in Q3, Q4, when everything's flourishing and beautifully grown to then, all right, now we're going to meet and look at all the goodness and then put that in the 26 plan?
So you want to know why staff didn't put an X there in Q1?
Yeah, yeah, I'm just, yeah, asking the question of like what's, there's one X, it's outreach and education and regional cooperation, which quite frankly, I don't know that, I think those are more arborists than they are commissioned, right? There's some input, sure, not much. Commission, like these other things are actually tangible and tactile to like, right here, our canopy is empty type of thing. So I'm just, is there more that can be done in Q1 for this group? I think there, I think what's there is appropriate. It's more of a, maybe that'll help in phasing the work. Let's move a couple X's to Q1 such that there's less X's in Q3.
So, I mean, maybe a comment on the, you know, unless we could add, you know, X's to Q1 or, you know, just make comments, you know, like board is, you know, interested in.
Do you want to see that there marked? I mean, it can be a comment. If you'd like to see them convene to discuss that more frequently, they can. I think what you're seeing is what's presented by staff based on their day-to-day management of the work and then involvement with the tree commission. But if the board would like to see them convene to have further discussion on this area, you can add that.
And I think too, what informs the work plans sometimes is just how things felt the previous year or two. And they said, you know, this kind of worked out schedule-wise.
We want this to be reflective of what the board wants, which is why we put it in front of you. But what's being proposed is what's based on staff's recommendation.
Yes, if you want to, you know, suggest a comment or, you know, a change to it. And we can come back to it too if you want to. Go ahead, Matt.
I was just going to say, I think some of these are, you know, can be open year-round, right? I just heard the other day about some invasive, I think some pear trees, for example. Maybe it didn't fall in Q4, but it could have been a Q1 thing. I see identifying planting opportunities as an all-year type scenario. Plant and removal recommendations as an all-year scenario. I don't see any seasonal restrictions on those, so I would advocate for maybe having them all year. But also, I think, again, as I learn more about these plans, understanding the connection between this then and the budget of how somebody takes the information in, like, oh, we've identified planting opportunities. And then, by the way, in Q2 for the arborist, and I'm not saying it's this one, but then in Q2 for the arborist, they've now thought of some recommendations that are going to go into the CIP or the budget. So again, that's just my learning curve. I'd like to see connections there over time. Nothing we can, that this particular plan would call out or the work plans, but just something I'd be looking for.
I I think I'm good with the plan as is, but I think Matt's kind of changed my mind here. So what I was thinking of, like with the planning and removal opportunities, I, there's a part of me thinking that those are quarter, three-quarter, four projects because there's a budget for tree planting and removals. And it is that end of the year where the arborist is starting to better understand what they requested versus what the board is going to approve for the following year. But yeah, I guess I could see that even going all year round because it could become a thing of, you know, it could become an item of the CIP, whether it's for the following year or say they, say we want to plant 5,000 trees in three, four, or five years. We can get that into the CIP and see where that works.
Did someone want to make a suggestion on this one? Maybe adding X's to the other quarters?
Yeah, I would say item two and item three, making them all year long, just like land development plan reviews. You know, I don't want to restrict anybody to only third quarter or fourth quarter can you go outside and look at something or make a recommendation. Anytime.
And, yeah, and go ahead.
I'm just thinking we're getting way too in the weeds. I'm a little overwhelmed, but.
We're up in the treetops.
Yeah, no, just realizing that as we were talking about earlier, we're planning on doing budget things differently. So ultimately, anything that they do is going to be just that. It's a recommendation to us. But, yeah. I appreciate it. And as for like the need to see, like, check it's been done, I feel like that's pretty rigid for what we're asking our, I mean, other than the planning commission. But it just feels all a little too rigid for me. And I'm really interested in just saying, yes, this all looks very reasonable. Thank you, let's do it.
Does someone want to make a suggestion on this one?
For my kind of opening, I would like to add number eight, which is budgetary implication review. I don't know what that is. Staff can figure out what it is. But that is keeping me up. And I'd like to understand, like with all this other stuff, right? That the team keeps budget in mind as they're, as the, as they're receiving feedback from volunteers on this commission.
So I have noted that. And their charter or part of their creation and membership has no reference to budgetary items. And so what I rely on, so they're actually, you know, an advisory role to the manager and the public works director. And then, of course, that informs information that gets put forth into the budget. So anything related to urban forestry as it relates to budget would go through the public works director, then the manager. And it's just part of the system as it's been defined in our code. So I can note this, but their charter.
What I see in the code, so the commission shall, dot, 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 or boom. Such advice may include, number eight, the preparation of an annual work plan and budget.
For the tree commission?
Oh, correct, yeah, tree commission, yes. 25-104.
Okay, so we'll add that in. It's noted, and we'll add that in.
Thank you.
I'm comfortable with that. Was there any, I mean, as, yeah, as doable, as appropriate, I think, you know? All right, okay, are we ready to move on from tree commission? Was there anything else?
Good.
Or could we just make that a blanket statement for all committees?
I guess it's included in the, we can look at each, I was just, I suggested it as we go through each one so that we can see what's in the, what's in the description. Okay, planning commission was up next. Comments on this? I guess my question was going to be on number nine, the zoning ordinance review. Recent land development submissions and zoning hearing board variance requests warrant review. Was there something specific?
That's been compiled, actually, for the past few years, since the last update. Just here's and there's, it's normal when you have a complete rewrite.
Oh, this is the updates from the rewrite. This is the, okay, okay. So I guess I would just clarify that in some way, just to narrow it down a little bit so that it's clear what that is. So that was attention to, for monitoring and clarification.
Corrections and inconsistencies.
Yes. Yes, throughout the update. Because when we did the update in the zoning and SALDO, there were, it was a very large update. So you're going to have some different things that you have to, that you're going to discover as new, say, development plans come in. Anyways, that's just kind of an ongoing thing, so, yeah. Yes.
We'll say, I see number four calls out the budget review on this particular work plan.
For the CIP?
For the Parks and Recreation Work Plan.
Planning Commission.
Oh, I apologize.
No, it's on parks. Am I looking at a different version?
I'm going through the, yeah, we were on planning commission.
Okay, so we started kind of second in the agenda, not the top of the agenda. Oh, you're going through that? Okay, they're not in the same order. I apologize.
No problem, we're on planning commission.
But planning commission number four does say capital improvements program, so.
And that is specific to the long-range growth management plan.
So the capital improvements program, however, in the charter of the planning commission, it doesn't call out anything budgetary or capital improvements, et cetera. So, again, is this?
Yeah, it's interesting that, well, the capital improvement plan is on there specifically as it relates to the long-range growth management plan, as far as I understand it. I think it was always noted, when you're in a planning commission meeting, we're not going to talk about the budget of this because it's, you know, you're reviewing the plans, you're looking at the ordinances and so forth. It's not, you're not looking at budgetary items. So I think the way that I'm reading this is, the activity is reviewed. I would probably change that to long-range growth management plan and remove the, and in the comments, put CIP item. I'd probably flip those, yeah.
I remember reviewing the plan for the new public works building on the planning commission, but I was like, can't say anything about the price tag because we don't normally comment on the price tag of a plan.
So, okay, other comments in here?
Yes, so the workforce housing ordinance, number 10, I'd like that to be worked in Q1, please.
Would that maybe be appropriate maybe for Q2? I kind of would like to maybe have some staff input on that before I would just go ahead and say, I want that in Q1.
I think that our planning and zoning director is going to benefit from having a little bit more time to transition and really get to better understand the ordinances, the ordinances specific to workforce housing ordinance and the history with some of the changes and particularly how it relates to the one that's currently under land development plan. And so I think, you know, if Q1 is the deadline, we'll work to meet that, but it might come with having limitations. And that's just, you know, I would want to just have realistic expectations, but we could meet that if that's what the board would like. If there's consensus for Q2, then we will work towards that. And so, it's really looking to the board to see where is the consensus for direction? And we will do our best to make sure that we're working on a timeline that meets that.
I agree, something needs to push, and I'm okay pushing something.
I mean, to me, this looked reasonable because it allows the new planning and zoning director a quarter to kind of get settled in and start to learn our ordinances and so forth. A quarter then to really be diving into that, and then it's presented to the planning commission. So I was, I'm okay with where it is.
I think there's a lot for the workforce housing, so I would also be a fan of maybe moving number 12 into the fourth quarter, the lighting ordinance. I don't see a lot of urgency maybe in that one.
You may recall, we had a matter of which that we had to invest financial dollars to resolve as a result of that lighting plan oversight.
I'm sorry, maybe I'm missing.
This is the lighting ordinance, it's under growth, this is item 12. It says growth management and then ensure the ordinances meeting the needs of township, this will be based, oh, so I think this, I think the comment might not be correct with the lighting ordinance there.
And I'll note the workforce housing ordinance is rated at a higher priority than the lighting ordinance review. So it really is already kind of expedited in that category, both equally important.
Yeah, I would make a note on that lighting ordinance comment. Yeah, and so that's medium priority, okay. Comments on that? You wanted to push that to?
I was just thinking it could be, just take it off the table until the fourth quarter unless there was a forcing function. I just don't see a forcing function, that's me.
And if, I mean, because it's medium, I think that would get pushed if not.
Yeah, I'm fine with the way it is too, knowing that. Again, I don't, if I'm getting too far into the details, I'm fine, just elevating that.
So zoning ordinance and SALDO, my understanding is SALDO does have some things that we need to clean up. Are there a lot of zoning things to clean up?
Yeah, that's what we were talking about with the update.
Probably a one to two-year plan, to be realistic. And that's prioritizing it.
Well, the STMP report did suggest, or, I don't even want to say a rewrite. It did suggest something of a rewrite, which is, I think that is an entire discussion in itself. I think this item is addressing some of the things where either, you know, fell off in the rewrites. Because the rewrite changed the entire model, the format, formatting, everything about the zoning ordinance. So you could not just redline the zoning ordinances and then see, you know, the clean copy of it. It was totally, so you're constantly kind of finding things that were not transferred over. It was really, you know, quite a large shift. So I think the STMP report recognized the deficiencies.
So maybe let's think about this from a impact to the community perspective. Which of these items are 20,000 existing residents in Ferguson Township, not 20,000, some large portion would be directly impacted by these things? And so I think for me, then, the zoning rewrite and maybe the cleanup doesn't impact most people that live here today because they live here today. It's really like other stuff, somebody building a new thing or it's more like new and future. We don't have any land development plans of massive anything right now going through the process. So maybe I'll.
And I think that was more like catching things, I don't, and cleaning them up as needed, so, but go ahead, it wasn't, yeah.
Neil to Kimberly, I'll comment afterwards.
The part for the zoning ordinance, there's the larger look that might follow from a comp plan update, maybe a complete change in some ideologies, more modernization. That's not what, I think this is, there are just a number of cleanups that we run into for procedural issues. Maybe something didn't connect, there's something in there that's not clear on just the direction staff is supposed to follow to carry out. So I think a lot of these things, they So I think a lot of these things, they do affect the current citizens as well, and they're just kind of stumbling blocks where we're having to essentially make interpretations as we go along, because it's just, there are little clarifications where if you go back to the original ordinance, oh, that was the intent. Kind of like the case we had even tonight where we had to kind of connect some dots. So it's just that, and like I said, we've got a list going already. It's more of an efficiency thing until we have the larger rewrite.
Yeah, Christie, did you want to?
I would love to hear specifics.
Thank you, so, because I'm the one with the list. I have an old copy, hard copy of the zoning ordinance, and I have tabs all over the place where the wrong section is referenced. There are portions of a definition missing. A prime example would be the age-restricted housing, which we ran into in a land development plan, which it affects one development at the moment with a potential 200 units, but it does cause an impact. Someone else could find that, we'll call it a loophole, and come in with another age-restricted development, and we don't really have a definition of age-restricted. But when you say it, we all think 55 and older, and that's what the previous definition did say. So that's one example where it does have an impact. And as our new planning and zoning director, she's even found things that are just worded a little funny, that's, it's not easily interpreted. So it could affect developments. So those are a few examples.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And this allows the staff the flexibility to bring these items to the Planning Commission as needed and discovered and.
But what I'm hearing is that that's going to be all year, there's, there's going to, I mean, are we going to take three months and do it all?
No.
No, because we have two years. And so it's kind of a regular thing. It should actually be in the bucket underneath the other things that are throughout the whole year, it sounds like.
It could, yeah, I mean, it's just under ordinance amendments, because they're ordinance amendments, but.
Cool, I, I get, fair. But it is, there's a, in every quarter, there's some of that going on. And so I believe that there are likely small changes that can be brought to the board quarterly to say, hey, we need to clean this up now, and then we just do it because it's the right thing to do, it's impacting a 200-unit development. But that's the same as workforce housing, which is really one shot. And as I understand it, there were a few tweaks that were done before, and there's probably a few more that can be done if we can get that thing out the door, Q1. That's my feeling on it. So I, I mean, this doesn't, I don't know, I, I appreciate the staff recommendation, but I think as we talk through these things, you can probably space out the zoning and fit in workforce housing in Q1 and get that thing done. Over. If it's not, let me know. Like, hey, we can't do it. I get it. But I, but I'm hearing that there's some things that can be probably spaced out over four quarters, and then the one thing that has only a few things to do could be done in one quarter.
I feel like it gives her an opportunity to better understand the community, and so I'm appreciative of that.
So I think what we're looking at, right, I mean, so workforce housing is actually chapter 27, it is a zoning ordinance, right? So what we're actually referring to, I'm looking through this and thinking even a little bit more broad, you know, review and recommendation, village zoning, district text and map update, that's still chapter 27. So in some ways, I think what we're looking at here is that chapter 27 review and update, it's just something that's going to happen over time. We're going to continue to receive or land development plans, we're going to continue to have observations where we're like, oh, this is a glitch, this is an area we need to add to the list. It's going to go onto the list, it's based on the conversations that Planning and the Planning Commission is going to hold, staff's going to recognize opportunity for an amendment, add it to the list. That list is going to grow, and then much like what's recommended in the stamp program, staff is going to likely, in the CIP for 2026 to 2031, recommend that we put funds aside to do a zoning update. It's just what we're going to need to do. And over the next year, as Planning Commission's having discussion, as zoning hearing boards meeting and approving or denying variances, whatnot, we're going to continue to grow that list to actually take forth and do that type of a zoning update. In the interim, over the next 12 months, there's also going to be an emphasis for a priority to do workforce housing ordinance review and update. And Planning Commission will have an instrumental role in reviewing and providing recommendations. I think what you have presented is staff's best judgment based on workload, based on expectations of land development plans that are going to come through, and just based on some general operations that we are attentive to and aware of. And what's presented here is a plan. So if Q3 is what's recommended, but we can pull it into Q2, we will. We want this done just as much as you do, because we want to cross it off the list. However, if it's recommended for Q2 and we can't get to it till Q3, I can assure you that there's not a staff member that doesn't recognize the board's highest level priority, the manager's, you know, communication to efficiency and effective local governance. And so I like the idea of bringing in reports as the boards ask for, you know, bringing those minutes in so you can review whether you're going to the website yourself or as soon as we're able to implement that into the work plan for operations, that it'll be part of your agenda, but you can review those updates and at any point ask questions one-on-one with your manager or in a board meeting. And what's presented is a, is a high-level recommendation. I don't disagree that we could clean up the language and we can work on that and bring it back. Well, it'll, it'll go in front of the board.
Yeah.
But I, I agree with all of the comments, and I, and again, the zoning ordinance review, I agree with Supervisor Patterson, we really do want to expedite this with reasonable expectations and a work plan that's going to give everybody the opportunity to do it in a sustainable and successful approach.
Okay, so we're going to look for some specific recommendations, and so far I have flipping that language with number four, the CIP and the long-range growth management, and then under ordinance amendments, what were the suggested changes or proposed?
Number 10 to Q1.
Okay.
And 12 to Q4.
Okay, so 10 to Q1, what are thoughts on that?
I still do not want to see 10 pushed up that far because I want to respect staff in giving them adequate time to put this together. Also, it's my understanding college township as well as Patton Township are also working on workforce housing ordinance. It may also be good to give staff even time if there's any opportunities for collaboration because, yeah. The workforce housing is not just a Ferguson Township issue, it is a regional issue as well.
I agree. So do you want to leave it in Q3?
I would, I would agree to leave it in Q3 and with the, hearing the conversation directly tonight, that any opportunity that exists to move it forward, great.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I would prefer to leave it in Q3. I mean, I want to see this moved too, but I, I want to, we have a brand-new planning zoning director, and I just want it to be done correctly, and I think that the, the comment about the other municipalities and being able to be theirs, we have our own zoning, and so ours can be, you know, unique to our needs, but, but it's helpful to see. So I would want to leave it in Q3.
If I could make maybe a general statement here, these are non-binding. They're non-binding.
Yeah.
Well.
How many times have you heard, not my work plan?
But today, they're non-binding today. And I think the manager and staff are now hearing an additional level of scrutiny that has been, not been applied to these in the past. So I'm wondering if this is a transitional conversation over the next year to say, now the next year, now they are, maybe are a little bit more binding to these things. Like, are we in a, I feel we're in more of a transition time, having done this once before, and, and knowing how other boards have looked at these, I think this is a transition. And maybe next year it'll be closer to binding, but at this point, it's still kind of non-binding, and we can pull things any way we want, either way.
Yeah, I mean, I'd say they're pretty, they're pretty firm. But the timing, as the manager suggested, you know, if, if something moves faster than something else, you know, it's not that they're going to say we can't touch this until Q3. So I think there is, and this is when it would be presented to Planning Commission too. So I think, yeah, I think, you know, we have, we have looked at these in the past, you know, pretty carefully, and, and they are referenced quite a bit. So I think they are, you know, they're significant documents, but, so I'm hearing leave this, leave number 10. My comment was going to be on number 11. Was there something before 11?
Yes, sorry, number nine? I heard there's several loophole, not loopholes, several misalignments, whatever, and we're going to keep finding them. Should we keep fixing them every quarter? And so I would just ask maybe that there's a every quarter for this so that we would expect if they find, if something's found, that the team's saying, hey, here's the thing, we're amending it, go.
We have to be careful with spot zoning.
Right, and so.
We're not spot zoning, I thought we're cleaning up.
Absolutely, you are right. We are, we are.
Well, I think that's how we've been doing it. I think as things come through, we've been making text amendments, mostly, yes.
So I think, so what we have sometimes is we have a land development plan that's under review, and if we're making a judgment call based on interpretation or, and/or intent, and if we go to change that while the land development plan is still under review, and then we're just kind of in that, in recognizing that we might have three to four or five to six different zoning ordinance, or different ordinances within chapter 27, we have to be mindful about what that might look like and how that can be interpreted.
Well, and that's a different case, if you're talking about something that's applying to a, a land development plan under review, so that's, that's very different, but, yeah, I'd let the director comment.
Would it be sort of batch in that way, that allows to be a little bit more intentional about it, because you also don't want to fix something that causes a new domino. So we want to look for those common threads as well, but we, I think we're basically just looking for the permission to bring things forward.
Yeah.
So is that batch just Q1?
Depends on how things come, we see things.
So I think you're looking at changing what's designated in the quarters, is what I'm hearing. So perhaps changing those to IP and everyone in progress to all the quarters?
Well, more of, I guess it would be the I.
Yeah, either one, but to, to have that in each, in each quarter, yeah, I'm fine with that because I think that, that speaks to what we're hearing from the director, that's an ongoing thing, and she is requesting the flexibility to be able to, as she sees something that she's ready to present, to be able to come present it.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, so is there consensus on that change? And then mine was 11, review and recommendation of village zoning district text and map amendment. And we'll get into this in the Pine Grove Mills plan, but I just, as, as I commented earlier when some of these things came through, I just think there's some other steps in the small area plan to be taken before we're looking at map and text amendments in the zoning district. And so that's my opinion, that I would like to see that moved to low and maybe fourth quarter, because I think there's a number of things in the actual small area plan to be completed before the advisory committee would get to that point. So my, my proposal would be to move that to low and fourth quarter.
No issue.
Yep.
And that way it stays on there, it's not dropped off, anyways. Okay, and then we had a comment on lighting ordinance, number 12. Matt, was that yours?
Yeah, just to move it to fourth quarter.
Move, I have no problem moving lighting ordinance to fourth quarter. And any, anything else that we want to take?
Is there consensus with moving the lighting ordinance?
Sorry, yeah, is there consensus on lighting ordinance to fourth quarter?
Sure.
Yep.
Okay, anything else on Planning Commission? Seeing nothing, let's move on to Pine Grove Mills Small Area Plan Advisory Committee. Routine activities, any comments?
Anything we want to do with the capital improvement program as we did with the previous comments? Changing that verbiage?
Right, yeah, I don't know that, I don't know that that belongs there, I think, yeah, so I'd, I'd be supportive of removing item two. Am I seeing consensus around that?
I agree.
Okay.
Would that mean, I'm sorry?
Oh, no, no, I was just going to say too, and again, we're changing our thoughts, right, this is the advisory committee advising others, advising the board, advising, advising, advising. So it's, again, I think that changes my mindset too about how I approach the items on this work plan.
Okay, anything else on routine activities?
They're all high, are they really high?
Well, if we remove capital improvement program, I guess items referred by the board would be high, interactions with Planning Commission, I guess if it's needed, it's high. I'm fine with changing interaction with Planning Commission to medium. I don't, yeah, I don't think they generally meet with each other a lot, so I think it's more of referrals is what that's referring to. So maybe it's their referral to the Planning Commission.
How do you prioritize a routine item? You don't.
Almost kind of need to maybe just have a neutral priority.
And I'll say, this is one issue we'll get into, is we're using this template for other, other things, so we will have to really, because next section is ordinance amendments, which is kind of difficult for even, you know, the advisory committee to be involved in, like, that's very particular, you know, that really, in my opinion, should be left to the Planning Commission. So, but we'll get there after we complete routine activities. But yeah, fair point, I mean, I think, yeah, so do we want to change anything under routine activities? We just have remove capital improvement program.
What's the last thing the board referred to, Seth?
The small area plan, probably, right? And maybe we referred back some, the village zoning. I think we just sent that back to planning, I don't know, did we send that back to?
Well, it ended up, it went to planning.
Oh, and they sent?
And this was also an item too that got referred to the board, yeah. So it was a kind of a dual entry, if you will.
Thank you.
Yeah, good question. Okay, ordinance amendments, I just made my comment. I think, you know, I think as they're looking at plan implementation under the next section, eventually, you know, they may bump into something that says, oh, that's, you know, that falls under a zoning ordinance, you know, we'd have to look at that. But I think putting ordinance amendments under the advisory committee is, I don't know, I think that's kind of, I think that's why we had the problem of stepping over some earlier steps within the plan.
The way I look at this, knowing how it involves the Planning Commission, is that these two items, they would, they would reach out to the Pine Grove Mills Small Area Plan Advisory Committee to consult with them. What are your thoughts about village Saldau and zoning district? But Planning Commission is the one leading that. What are your thoughts about chapter 19, signs and billboards? Again, I look at this as they would be consulted in these two things, but really not taking the lead on. I know that's an additional layer for another time to talk about these holistically, but I think about a RACI and, you know, RACI, responsible, accountable, consulted with, informed, they would be consulted with. But the Planning Commission takes the lead. So these could even just come out or, you know, just have a comment of, we'll be in coordination or Planning Commission will consult with them, and we just remove the priorities and the timing on it.
You know, wouldn't, it is complicated, because then if you're, if the Planning Commission was referring something back regarding, say, chapter 19, signs or village, those aren't exclusive to Pine Grove Mills, and so. And so it's, it's, it's a little problematic in my estimation to be referring something to one subcommittee that really is going to involve the entire township. And so, or, you know, a different village zoning district and so forth. So that's, that's my hesitation in having this outlined in this way, um.
And, and if I may, I, I wouldn't, they wouldn't be, planning commission wouldn't be handing this to, to the Pine Grove Mills Small Area Plan Advisory Committee. They would just be reaching out to say, what are your thoughts on? And that, that's really all the committee would do is offer their thoughts and perspectives. But that, so it's not even like it really falls into there, they would just be there to be consulted.
I agree with you, Matt, remove these from here and just consult.
Well, I don't know if I'd remove them, I would just say, remove the priorities, the timing, et cetera, and just in the comments say, to be, you know, consulted with the, to inform or support the planning commission.
Well, my comment was going, my suggestion would be to remove signs and billboards. I think that doesn't fall under Pine Grove Mills Small Area Plan. So I would remove that.
I might have another thought on that because they were consulted with when it came to the mural. Because the mural wanted to be implemented, so then when it went to planning commission, and when there were discussions about it, then it went back to, what are your thoughts, Pine Grove Mills Small Area Plan Advisory Committee? Because you're, the ask came in from there.
Right, and again, I would say that just needs to sit with the board because that's not specific to Pine Grove Mills.
True.
So I'm just, I'm, I'm concerned about, as I said, I'm just concerned about these very large township-wide broad items being referenced in the work plan of, you know, of one subject, this, my opinion.
I don't, I don't see anything wrong with feedback from these committees. I mean, we could put this, all of this on every committee as of, we'll consult every committee with this stuff.
Yeah, and, and like what, you know, uh, maybe a process would be, they have a discussion on murals. Mural, murals rises up, you know, through and comes back to the board and the board discusses that. So that could be, you know, that could be a process, that's a different conversation. My suggestion is removing signs and billboards and moving zoning saldo to a medium priority. And then bumping it back within the year, so. Thoughts on any of that?
Yes.
Okay, I'm hearing consensus on that. Okay, any, anything else, we can go to plan implementation. I just had a couple of thoughts, I think I would probably move number eight to a low priority and then move numbers nine and 10 to a medium. Those to me are some of the more, um, and then like with 11 and 12, some of the more, uh, manageable tasks for that advisory committee to kind of get, you know, this historical framework for, you know, for the village and reach out to the business community. Those were things within the plan that seemed like first steps and, you know, uh, kind of, um, you know, building, you know, kind of foundation building steps. And so I think it would be helpful to go back to that. Those would be my suggestions.
I'm good with those suggestions. I just, I have, again, I'll, I'll couch this as concerns. There are a couple of items on here that have been on here for multiple years. And I have, and we haven't seen movement on them, back to the original point of, you know, if we're, are we making progress towards things and can we see the progress being made? So I think about, you know, number 10. I think about number 11. Those two items have been in one way or another on the work plans for the past two years.
Right, and I think number six, establish responsible party for the initiatives and tasks. That's a high priority, that's in Q1. Let's tackle it, you know? Leave that there, establish some, you know, because there was a lot, if you read the plan, there was a lot of instruction on outreach to community groups, knowing that there are a lot of established community, uh, representatives within Pine Grove Mills and figuring out how to connect with the area and get these things done, so.
And when I was chair, we did that. But some of these items still haven't moved, that's why I'm, I was wondering like, again, I'm just looking to see progress.
Yeah, okay.
Madam Chair, so I, I do want to, just in the comment section, it says Pine Grove Mills residents. And so in the plan, the Pine Grove Mills Maria Plan that was developed at the, um, in the back of the plan, it identifies who the responsible party is. And so residence is separate from the Pine Grove Mills Maria Plan Advisory Committee. And so we won't see movement because it's not under the, the purview of the township. And so I would, I, I do think that maybe perhaps the way this is being presented is, is an opportunity for a discussion, which is also why we're maybe even considering an opportunity for having an update to the plan because there continues to be a level of confusion as to what's the township taking on in terms of an initiative versus what the plan calls for, for residents to take on.
Okay, so that would be to reevaluate the plan for updates, um, maybe changing that to, um, reevaluate the plan for updates and, uh, updates accuracy and relevancy, I think. I probably wouldn't put it that way, but something to that effect, what's changed?
And I would have conversations with CRPA, understanding that they took the lead in developing the plan. And it would be part of a regional initiative that we pay in for. And so it would be an opportunity for us to have those discussions. And Pine Grove Mills Maria Plan Advisory Committee members would be instrumental in providing support and connecting as a partner to CRPA if we're able to launch that plan update.
Yeah, I'd, I'd be hesitant to look at kind of a rewriting of, I mean, it was such a big involved endeavor. And so, and it's a good plan, I mean, it's, it's a good plan. Yes, Christine, yes, I'd invite Christina to come up. But I think updating it so that we can better reflect the work plan goals, yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, I've been attending all the meetings and everything, and so, um, things may be updated. There are items that have been completed and there's still an action item in the implementation plan. So I think, and other items have been evaluated and deemed too big to tackle. A prime example would be install light at the intersection of Water Street and Pine Grove Road. There was a study done and not enough traffic comes down Water Street. So therefore, that, the consultant did give recommendations for installation of a traffic circle, um, which the board received. So things like that can be incorporated into the plan as an implementation step down the road.
Yeah.
So updates like that, I think is what the manager is looking for. And putting that on CRPA because they did develop the original plan.
Yeah, okay.
If I could make a recommendation, I recommend that we move number seven, the reevaluation of the 19, Pine Grove Mills Small Area Plan Advisory Committee, uh, for updates. Keep that as the high priority. The number six drops to a medium priority. And, yeah, that's it.
Yeah. Maybe, yeah.
So help me understand, Madam Chair, because I didn't understand what the comments meant. Now, now that makes sense that everything under plan implementation says residence, but one item says staff and another item says CRPA staff, so nothing to do with township. So why are they on here? From a board directing residents to go do a thing that the township's not responsible for? If you want to keep it fine, I'm just, that's not making sense to me from a charter perspective and from what we're supposed to do as a, as a board.
Great comment and question and observation. I would say that this advisory committee was created, um, really quickly in response to this great plan that was developed. And as we really tried to get more specific and narrowly focus on how we efficiently and effectively work through what the township priorities are versus what's, because if you look at the plan, like the Pine Grove Mills Maria Plan, it calls out responsible party. And I think maybe initially we didn't fully address and deep dive the different responsible parties. We just kind of went in and we did a lot of work. So the, the responsible party being the township, we've done, I, I want to say almost everything, right? We striped the parking, we did the study for parking, we striped the parking, we did the streetlights. So we've done what we were obligated, I shouldn't say obligated, but, you know, designated to do in the plan. And what we're seeing here are residents. And so it's still part of that advisory committee. I think the members of that advisory committee have a great deal of pride and ownership. And so for them, they like to see it recognized. But the responsible party falls more on the side of just members of the, of the community, Pine Grove Mills residents. And so that's where the opportunity for an update to the plan in the, in the future might be really helpful to focus on scope and responsible party.
And I, I think too, you know, just looking back at the history, it's, it's the advisory committee that's the organizational force. And so you needed a structure and, and, you know, you needed a structure and you needed, you know, some kind of organization behind mobilizing residents to do things. And so that was the idea. It's diff, you know, it's been difficult to probably, you know, mobilize residents to take on certain tasks. But I think, you know, as part of an update, that's what could be addressed.
Update to the plan, which is one of the items you're saying?
Yeah, yeah, through CRPA, yeah. So I think, yeah, I'm, I'm fine with Matt's suggestion of bumping up, um, set number seven, making number six a medium, and then I'd probably make everything else a, um, you know? Yeah, yeah, or leave, you know, leave them like they are, that's fine.
Who's priority is this?
Priority in terms of?
I don't know, it's a priority, you're saying we're going to make priority, priority for who? Are we prioritizing the residents' tasks?
Well, I, I.
What's the priority in the board's eyes of what should be done?
Right, this moves up that update and kind of clears, clean, cleans up the plan a little bit.
Okay.
Yeah.
I would just add, in the, in the charter of this group, what's missing is grants. Finding and applying for grants. So, and it's not on this work plan. I think that as we talk about doing things, that there's some funding associated with those things.
Yeah, true.
Okay. Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Adding grants as number 11?
Well, ABCs to, to brighten advisory goal, like a, help me understand. I would just need a little bit more clarification of what the task is for the Pine Grove Mills.
To identify and assist in preparation of grant applications and request for funding to advance the projects described in the plan.
To me, that number 13.
11, I think. Is there a, oh, it is for around 13, 14? Oh, yeah, 12, 13 under that, that, yeah. Yes, ma'am.
Mm-hmm, yeah, okay, I see consensus on that. I think that would become applicable when there is a particular, um, project that comes up, yeah.
I think there's two pieces though, there's a source for use and then there's a use to get a source. And so, you know, somebody sees some dollars out there for, I don't know.
Route 45 getaways, that was one of the things that came through.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, exactly, so it's been done, it's been done. And I think adding it on there so it's specifically called out makes sense.
An official.
Yeah, mm-hmm. Okay, very good, anything else on Pine Grove Mills? Okay, and, oh, yes, please come up to the podium and we're going to try to get to our last one here very quickly.
Bill Keogh, Ferguson Township. Probably Matt has the longest tenure, Matt, and, and our chair with this particular committee. But it seems to me, and I'm trying to recall some of the history of, of how this all got going. And initially, we were looking for some vision with regard to the community of Pine Grove Mills. How was it best to develop that division, that vision? And it was always my thought that we would divorce as a township from the Pine Grove Mills Small Area Plan at some point in the future. And I think one of the steps that we do need to do yet before we divorce them and let them become an entity for themselves is help them develop themselves with a 501(c)(3). And then let them function as a community the way they want to go with their own 501(c)(3) designation. I think Omari has a good point with regard to at what point are we really obligated as a, a municipality governance body to, to continue or to assist them in, in their vision? And I think we're coming close to that time in my mind when maybe it's time for an amicable divorce. With the idea of helping them create their own independent kind of body to move the vision forward with activities and, they would come to the board of supervisors and say, we would like to do this. Can you assist, we, we need or would like to have a zoning change? Or we'd like to have this or that. They, they'd come to you for that, uh, but in a 501(c)(3) environment rather than kind of the environment that we've created and maybe has lived its lifetime already, uh, and we're ready for that separation. So that's something to consider in terms of your work plan for 2025, is looking at that option as, as a future option for the Pine Grove Mills Small Area Plan Committee.
Thanks, okay, any other?
No, and I think historically, that was the original intent, was to be a 501(c)(3). But then the manager at the time said, hold on, we can get you closer to the decision-making by creating the Pine Grove Mills Small Area Plan Advisory Committee. And there's still talk about, can we still do a separate entity and have community members like the CIA, Community in Action, by the way, not Central Intelligence Agency.
Pine Grove Mills CIA.
Yeah, so again, I think that it's ripe for the discussion and ongoing.
Yeah, I think, you know, in terms of it being a, you know, more of a long, long-range planning tool, you know, it's useful for the township to have that involvement with it at this point. But yeah, that was, you know, what was visioned in, in the plan itself. And so I think that's, uh, important to keep in mind. All right, anything else, and I'm ready to move on to Parks and Recreation Committee? I had no comments on that. I see any, any changes on any of that? Okay, I didn't have any, okay, nothing on that. Zoning Hearing Board, um, you know, the only thing I guess I would note on there is, and maybe in, um, with planning commission as well as, uh, training opportunities as they become available. And so I, I meant to mention that under planning commission. So I guess I would suggest that as, as a, um, whatever our top routine activity maybe is training as available. Uh, and I would put that on for zoning hearing board as well. And again, zoning hearing board, board is a body that meets as needed, so. Okay, did we want to discuss frequency? We have, um, I assume that these were the 2024 schedule dates on here. And then the manager was proposing, uh, Pine Grove Mills Small Area Plan Advisory Committee, Parks and Rec and Tree Commission to be considered for bi-monthly meetings, although Park and Rec was, looks like they were already recommended to be quarterly. So, um, so small, Pine Grove Mills and Tree Commission is the recommendation to meet every other month and Parks Committee quarterly? Was that the recommendation?
Yes.
Okay.
Although there are ABCs that are, accept planning. Although there are ABCs that are, accept Planning Commission and Zoning Hearing Board, there's not an objection to quarterly meetings for all of them.
For all, okay.
But by, but every other month is also.
Okay, so Park Committee, it looks like, is on here for First Thursday of each quarter. So I'm, I think that makes sense. And then Pine Grove Mills and Tree Commission, do we want that every other month or quarterly based on what we saw in the, in the work plans? Thoughts on adjustment to those frequency of meetings?
I would just ask for the, the reasoning behind expand or having only bi-monthly meetings. Just help me understand the context of why.
Of course. So regularly, I hear oftentimes that there's really not enough work. And when the ABCs are meeting just to meet, they kind of just evolve in discussions as to what they kind of casually discuss and evolve into a, we could do this and we should do that. And we could do this and we could do that. And, and it's a, it's a great deal of work to prepare the agendas and do the minutes and maintain in accordance with Sunshine Act. And so recognizing that as we're looking to cut cost and efficiency, there's a lot of time, right? These evening meetings, they require a recording secretary, a staff liaison, and then once that time is provided in the evening, there's flex time, less time available during the workday. And so it's, it would become a tool for effective governance and use of our authorities, boards and commissions. And of course, we would meet as needed beyond the proposed quarterly meetings if needed.
And let me understand how the agendas for these items are, for these ABCs are done. That's done with the chairs of each of these committees? Staff reaches out to them to see what items they need to discuss, et cetera?
It's part of the process. Oftentimes, we will reach out and say, is there anything specific that you want to weigh in? And we provide a review of the, like, proposed agenda, much like we do with the board. Staff presents based on operational need. And then the chair gets an opportunity to review and provide comment and, but there's no, there's no firm expectation that the chair is going to create the actual agenda. But the chair gets an opportunity to review or discuss or provide input.
And that's just current process, not necessarily policy?
It's an advisory committee. And so recognizing it's taking staff time, we want to make sure that we're utilizing the effective use of ABCs as it results to the work plan that's coming from the Board of Supervisors and management of staff's time and availability to provide support and facilitate what's been directed by the board for ABC. Right? So if the chair says, I want to talk about sunflowers, it very well could feed into a very relevant discussion. And we will add that if, if it's relatable to the work plan by the Board of Supervisors. But if it's not, we also want to maintain realistic expectations and achievement of obtainable goals. And so adding just items to add them is something we also want to be mindful with that balance.
Did you have something? Okay.
I'd be okay with moving these to bimonthly, as long as maybe there was a process to say that both the chair and staff need to agree on whether or not a meeting should be canceled. I, I don't want that all sitting on staff. And I, I think it should be part of the chair's responsibility too, to determine whether or not the meeting needs to be held.
I can make a comment of that and certainly give that some thought and consideration.
Okay, so we're okay with the every other? Yeah, okay. Any other thoughts on this item? And then with all those changes, I'll ask the manager. Do you want a motion at this point? Do you want to bring us back the organizational meeting for approval then?
I've taken some notes and certainly will inform the changes. So of course, as it relates to priorities and making sure that we've moved things around to reflect the board's policy and advisory or direction to the ABCs for these advisory roles, we'll make those changes and then we'll disseminate the work plan to the, at the organizational meetings for the ABCs.
Okay.
And then we'll, you know, try to meet all of what's been discussed in terms of comments.
Okay. So you want this motion to approve now because we're adopting this, this isn't our organizational agenda?
I'll be fine.
We'll do this now, okay?
Question?
Yeah.
It just hit me. These work plans were staff recommended?
Yeah, this is not something.
Did the ABC's input have any input to these work plans?
Yeah.
Okay. And that's, I mean, I think that hits on Matt's point of, and, and what you said, like, somebody wants to talk about sunflowers and it may have something to do with something, but it's not in the work plan. So I think for me, like, I, I I like the idea of having, being a little bit flexible, a little more nimble to allow some things to, to move forward. I've asked for and kind of spoke about maybe a month, last month, last meeting, that innovation, we're going to be innovative and iterative and some other I-words with our kind of execution and with our, the thing that's going to keep me, that keeps me up at night, which is the budget. And it's not only staff that has the, the ideas, right? I mean, there's other people that may have some things to kind of bring to the table to talk about. So I'm just, I'm uncomfortable now with this. I don't know, this thing that we're now, that was kind of put before, as staff said, we were like, okay, we like what's there, but others may have other ideas. And because they're now not in the work plan, they won't get any discussion. I just, I'm a little uncomfortable with that.
I don't think that they won't get any discussion. I mean, certainly, ideas can be tossed around. They can be brought to the committees, they can be brought here. I think you're just trying to make this more complicated than it needs to be, quite honestly.
I'm concerned.
I appreciate your concern.
Did our manager not just say, somebody brings up sunflowers, not work plan, sorry? I, that's what I got from it, right? I mean, did I not?
That's an earful, sunflowers, right? So if somebody comes to the Board of Supervisors and says, we have an issue and we want to see this addressed, and the board says, okay, we're going to talk about this. Or like the board's purview is, thank you for your comment. Or a board member could put on for consent agenda for a discussion. And as you discuss it, you can say, okay, we want to direct this for the Parks and Recreation Committee to talk more about bike paths, right? So, so there is a process. We have processes that are embedded in our code. Anything outside of that has, you know, there's a process. And so to the point Supervisor Stevens just made, right? Yes, if somebody comes to me and says, I want to talk about sunflowers, I, I don't know that I'm going to, okay, let's talk, like, how about you and I meet? And talk to me about why sunflowers is so important for the Parks and Recreation Committee. I mean, I have to be reasonable and set reasonable expectations for staff. I cannot expect staff to just jump with the discussion about sunflowers. However, if I hear from a citizen that sounds very much more aligned with a board policy item, I will say, this is something that you might want to share with the board. And you are welcome to come to a board meeting and provide your comment during citizen input. I also refer them to section 2.25 of the Charter, which gives them several different options to get in front of the board and either just provide comment to the board or to provide a request for a response from the board. So there are options within our Charter and our code that then the board can make a determination if they want to have this for further discussion and then direct for a ABC to provide a recommendation. And then there are times that within the manager purview, if I think this is something that needs to be further discussed, the manager, you know, would then say, okay, let's add this for discussion to the Parks and Recreation. Before I put this on for a board discussion, let's go ahead and vet this through the ABC. So there are options, but also, and I do apologize if the example for sunflower wasn't perhaps as clear, but it was in part to say something as kind of just non-relevant for government, for governance, sunflower. It's like, let's unpack this a little bit. If there's relevance, sure, as the manager, I might say to the Parks and Recreation Committee liaison, why don't we add this and see what the Parks and Recreation Committee's thoughts are to determine if this is something that's going to go in front of the board? Or if it carries a little bit more weight, I might just direct that individual to the board for podium, for, for input at the podium. So there are several different options and flexibilities. And it's all within our format and our process that's embedded in our code.
Item five on our agenda is public input.
That's my thought. So I think we'll look for a motion then to approve.
Two sort of small things. So the November 12th, the Planning Commission Chair offered to the Planning Commission to, to send some emails in. So a couple took advantage of that directly to staff, but it was not a, a formal input or discussion. The other item on, for the ZHB date, it's the second Tuesday. So if you're voting, it's actually the fourth.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you for that. Thank you.
Thank you for that. There was an input to the work plan, but it may or may not make, okay, thank you.
Not formal, but just opportunity to email. They were also, you know, advised, just as you've noted, that they could come to this meeting if they wished, and one did.
Okay. Other thoughts, comments on the work plans? And we'll take a motion to approve and we'll just amend the motion instead of as presented to, as. Yeah, as discussed and amended.
All right. This is Patty. I moved that the Board of Supervisors approved the proposed 2025 work plans and schedules as, sorry.
Discussed and amended?
Discussed and amended for the Tree Commission, Pine Grove Mills Small Area Plan Advisory Committee, Parks and Recreation Committee, and the Planning Committee.
Your second.
I, I will second that.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I, I'd like to see a final version, but we can.
I think just to confirm, though, with the Pine Grove Mills Small Area Plan Advisory Committee, so the chair was not consulted with on these?
No, this is a board-driven document.
Yeah.
That is correct.
I, I just remember when I was doing it, I was consulted with, and then it went to the board.
And, and we had an issue around that time, right? So an item got approved without it being board-directed. And as your manager, I was working with two board members who had very different contrasting, you know, ideas as to what should be coming through. And so a law, a letter to lobby for legislation came through from an ABC. And by the time it made its way to the board, I then had a board who had very different ideas as to what we should be doing. And so in, you know, reflecting and discussing with solicitor and process and, and codes and procedures, the work plan that's not required, this is not something that has to be done or necessarily should be done. In fact, I'm, I'm starting to think it might create more, more, more areas to navigate than perhaps benefit. But it created a very difficult challenge in that we had lobbying legislation prepared, ready to go, but because that directive came at the ideal preference of that ABC and not a directive from the board, by the time it got to the board, because lobbying legislation should only come from the board and not an ABC. So we re-altered the direction of these work plans. The work plans come from the Board of Supervisors. There has to be consensus by the governing body. And then you're telling your ABCs what you want them to work on. And then they have the flexibility and an opportunity to say, okay, we're working on this and we get to drive the, you know, the boat in terms of what we're preparing for a recommendation to the board. The board chooses to accept the recommendation or not. The latitude and opportunity to kind of navigate within a, a structure is that that ABC then is kind of preparing their methodology, their discussion, their creativity gets infused, their expertise gets infused into the development of that recommendation. But it comes at the directive of the Board of Supervisors.
And, and I guess that's where I'm, I'm having a bit of a hiccup because I would have hoped that they would have been consulted with before it came to us. For us to, yes, enact and approve. I mean, we've, we have chairs of these committees. These are volunteers that are taking their time out of their lives to support the township. And I want to make sure that their voices are heard before something comes to us for approval. That's all I'm saying.
I mean, I would say, like with the Pine Grove Mills, you know, those items are pulled directly from the plan. For the Tree Commission, the arborist has worked on the plan and that's their staff liaison. So I, I guess I feel comfortable that, you know, committee members were informed or have informed the work plans. But, so other discussion?
Thanks, everybody, for your work here. I, I'm not disparaging anything. I really, I, I appreciate the work that's gone into it. So that's, thank you.
All right. If there's no other discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no.
No.
All right. And we have already done item six, so we will move to any communications to the board? Anyone needs to share?
I had a communication relating to PAC 44 over in Pine Grove Mills. Maybe we want to come to a meeting. And so future discussion maybe between me and the chair about what that might look like.
Fantastic.
Madam Chair, I wanted to take a moment. Well, this is not the end of your tenure on the board. You have expressed that this is going to be your final meeting as chair. And the Board of Supervisors just wanted to take a moment to recognize you. You have put in a lot of hard work over the past two years as chair. And I believe you said it was two years before that, you were vice chair. And I, I remember even being on the Planning Commission with you when you were chair there. So you, you've been chair everywhere. Pretty much. But also, I want to also take a moment to recognize that you became a chair well-renowned on the state level through your talk with you being on the panel with Centuries at PML. So we got a statewide-recognized chair here that's led us. So just on behalf of the board, we wanted to send a token of appreciation to you. If you don't mind me suspending the rules to open the floor for any board members that may want to add some remarks.
Oh, so thoughtful. I appreciate that so much.
Here she is, chair, like, anybody want to tell me how good I am?
No, I was going to say, thank you.
Sincerely, thank you for all the hard work, the time that goes in, staying late, supporting with everything and having staff and the community in mind with everything that you do. I truly appreciate it.
Thank you. So thoughtful.
And as the newbie, thank you. This was, you know, leadership, your guidance, mentorship, I really appreciate it.
All of that.
Oh, that was just so touching. Thank you all so much. It's been a pleasure and a privilege. And so I, I really, really have appreciated the opportunity. Thank you. Thank you so much. And I guess there is nothing else. I, we are not meeting tomorrow. We do not have a special meeting tomorrow that was in the agenda. So unless there is nothing else, anything else, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And I'll second, and we were adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.